Call meeting order. Resolution of fact.
Good evening, Sherri Glover, 1324 Jenkowski Court, South Plainfield.
Roll call please.
Mr. Poe? Here.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Marinella?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
And Mr. Cunici?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Here.
Mrs. Wallach?
Here.
Mr. Cassio?
Here.
Mr. Chapman?
Here.
In accordance with the terms of the Sunshine Law, I quick notice that this meeting was posted in all school buildings, the administration building, Borough Clerk's Office, Police Headquarters, Clubbed Library, four newspapers and tap into on January 9th of 2020. Please be advised, there is no smoking on school grounds inside or out at any time. Please silence all electronic devices. Now pursuant to District Policy 0167, each statement made by participant shall be limited to three minutes duration, excuse me, three minutes duration, and no participant may speak more than once on the same topic. Do I have any agenda additions or deletions? Seeing none, moving along. We'll have the public hearing for proposed employment contract for Dr. Leashack. Any public comments on the contract items?
Good evening, Sherri Glover, 1324 Jenkowsky Court, South Plainfield. You said we could only talk about what's on the contract? Is that what you said? Okay. So I'll save my statement for another comment later. As a previous board member who was part of the search committee that hired Dr. Leashack, I fully support her decision to commit to South Plainfield for the next five years. Since her arrival, she has been dedicated to providing the best for our students, staff, and community. We now have fiscal stability within our district, and with all of the preparation that we did and the presentation that needed to happen to pass our referendum that many naysayers thought would never fly, actually did. And now we see the fruits of that labor. Our physical infrastructure has been restored tremendously, and our children are in safe, warm slash cool, mold and asbestos-free facilities. Our students have benefited from these overhauls in our curriculum, and we're in a new direction. Along with her administrative team, our district has been moving out of stagnation. The safety and security of our students also have been a priority that Dr. Leashack has been vigilant in working towards, working alongside our local law enforcement to ensure that student safety is paramount. Dr. Leashack's experience has demonstrated the outcomes, which is why I support the board's decision, I hope, tonight to extend this contract. I know some are concerned about the salary, however, it is commensurate with the size of our school district and what happens, what is happening around New Jersey. I don't believe in any way that we are overpaying for a high-quality professional. This is a 24-hour day job. She has nine people that she has to answer to, with over 3,300 students and 450-plus staff to manage. And we all know it's common knowledge that many CEOs around the United States make a hell of a lot more. Why wouldn't we pay our top school CEO a fair salary for our most precious commodity, our children? We need to keep our district intact administratively and not turn back the hands of time with the instability and uncertainty that we saw in the past. I hope that the board will support this proposal on the agenda tonight, and hopefully we can keep Dr. Leashack the next five years. Thank you.
Good morning, questions, South Plainfield. Currently NASA is recruiting new astronauts. Requirements: Master degree in STEM from NASA accredited university, minimum two years in the profession.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes?
How is this related to Dr. Leashack's proposed contract?
Oh, wait a moment.
Just about the contract, sir.
Yes, I'm talking about the contract. I'm comparing contract to the salaries in NASA and requirements in NASA. Okay?
Okay, sure.
The candidate must be aware that their line of work may have, that their line of work may have consequences for their life and death, and be prepared for anything that can be happened. Salary: 105K to 161K. How this compares to the salary of a superintendent? Can somebody explain this to me?
You'll probably have to discuss that with the government of NASA.
What is the reason bonuses of up to 70KB, eh, 70K in the proposed contract on top of the salary of 200K? One would think that for such salary, the superintendent should do this job, but according to the board, in order to do their job, additional 70K are needed. Can somebody explain this to me?
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't understand the first part of your question. Can you repeat?
My question is, what are bonuses for? I told the salaries for doing a job. What is a bonus for?
It's standard in superintendent contracts throughout the county and in New Jersey that there's merit bonuses inside of their contracts for accomplishing certain objectives.
And is that how to put whatever is in a job description?
No.
Okay, so what does it mean that the superintendent works 20 hours per day? Or what does it mean? Where does time for this, additional goals come from? Where is this spent?
The superintendent job is basically, as Mrs. Glover referred to previously, a 47 job. She's on call all the time, okay? Something happens in the school district, the police have to call her, so asking a question, is she working 20 hours a day? Yeah. Any other public comments, sir?
Yeah, Stephen Daniel, 323 Water of Avenue in South Plainfield. How much of a percentage of a raise are you giving the doctor?
Dr. Leashack is not getting a raise in her contract.
She's not getting a raise?
No. She gets, her contract calls for a 2% that stays the same as what's in the existing contract of 2%.
Also, the gentleman asked about bonuses. What bonuses are they for? For increasing test scores or performance-wise?
It could be, the board on an annual basis provides her with five merit goals to accomplish. It's what the board decides we would like extra merit to accomplish and not give us further.
All right, thank you. Also, in our contract, if she were to leave, she'd get paid for her sick time?
No, not for sick time, sir.
Not for sick time? All right, thank you. I think Dr. Luchek has done a good job, and I think her salary is comparable to a person that runs a budget this big, a private industry, and deals with the problems she does. I think she's done a very good job, and she should be commended. I just wish she would, I wish the board and her would come up with some way to lower our property taxes. I know that deals with a lot of Trenton, what your state aids, and that's not in your hand, but I wish my property taxes would go down every year. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other further public comments on the proposed contract?
Lisa Mayers, 2341 Oxford Avenue, South Plainfield. What exactly are the merits for? Like, you're saying for certain goals. Is she physically taking care of those goals, or are other people in the district taking care of those goals under her?
Like any other organization, where she would definitely make sure that overseeing that the accomplishment of those goals take place is her responsibility.
So she's not physically actually doing it?
No, it's her responsibility to make sure they get done.
And the medical benefits? Are they admin benefits or the teacher benefits? What package is she getting?
The benefit package that she's going to be getting is the same benefit package that everybody else in the central administration building has.
So it's an admin medical benefit package?
It's, no, it's the same package as the SPEA. The teachers, the administrators, the secretaries.
How come not the admin benefits?
Right, and she's getting the same benefit package that everybody in the central administration building has.
But not as the actual administrators? She's getting the same package as the teachers?
That's a different bargaining unit, so they have their own benefit plan, she's getting a different benefit plan that's the same as the teachers and the other administrators.
Why is that though? And what's the difference in the prices?
So, the difference in the price, so just to give you a little bit of background, Dr. Leashack, like every other employee here, is eligible for medical benefits from the day she started working here. She's never taken her medical benefits. She saved the district in excess of $85,000 since she's been here by not taking her medical benefits and not asking for a waiver or a stipend, as some other superintendents in some other districts do.
But that's because she had her spouses.
It doesn't make a difference, it saved the district. She was entitled to it in her contract, and she did not pay due. So, she, and recently when we were talking about this contract, made a request to switch over to the other benefits. The differential to the district will be roughly $3,400 a year, and we felt as though that was reasonable.
On top of getting the 2%, on top of the merits?
Yes.
And does any of the other administrators in our town have that same package or have that same offer?
The, Dr. Leashack is not part of one of the bargaining units, so if you're referring to principals or people of that nature, they're part of a bargaining unit and they negotiate their benefits.
So, but is anybody else eligible for those benefits, or is it just her? Like, in her, in a position like hers? So, say?
Yes, yes.
And then we have to fulfill that?
Well, that's how the public school system works, yes. Any other public comments on the proposed resolution?
That's ridiculous.
Seeing none of the board member comments. Mr. Cassio?
I cannot vote on Dr. Leashack's contract, because I'm conflicted, having a family member in the district. If I could vote, I'd fully support it. This district has come a long way in four years that she's been here. I can tell you from what I've seen, I'm, I'm in the business field, okay? I've been running my business for 25 years, I see how it works. I run a budget, she runs a budget. She does a hell of a job, okay? It's a 24-hour day job, I know because I get phone calls in the middle of the night, you know, with questions or whatnot, things that are occurring. I see it. It's hard for everyone that are not on the ground level seeing it, but I put my trust in her moving forward, and I hope the rest of the board fully supports that. So, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Any other board member comments? Mr. Cecilberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Having served on the board previously when we went through the years of rotating superintendents, we really did not have a long-range view of what can be done in this district, that things are changing every 18 months, two years, based on what they thought would work. And also being on the team that hired Dr. Leashack, I think she's brought a lot of stability to the district, not only in her own personal commitment, but some of the other administrators and administrative staff that she brought into the district. Mrs. Glover referred to the referendum that passed, and her commitment personally, along with the business minister at the time, the teachers, even the students, everybody who was involved in that got it done. And I think in the years that we've had Dr. Leashack here, there's been a lot of positive, visible improvements in the district, as well as academic and extracurricular and other achievements in this district that I don't think would have happened if we hadn't worked on Dr. Leashack, so I support her staying here for another five years at least.
Mr. Cunici?
Okay, thank you. Just my perspective, as being a former superintendent and running a district here that's, I guess it was three or four times the biggest idea, you know, and I know the headaches I had, you know, I can appreciate it, and the business stuff, don't really understand and don't appreciate, and I understand that, you know, but I know, as a former superintendent and being here my whole life and going through, if Dr. Leashack stays to this, to this contract, would probably be the third superintendent that I've been on the board, and I've been on for 27 years, and, you know, in the years, you know, the off-years, that's remained more than one term. And you see the benefits of, you know, having a good superintendent stay. Obviously, if you're not having a good superintendent, you don't want to stay, and that's what's happened in the past. So, you know, I fully support the contract. The contract's fair, it's fair to the board, and it's fair to Dr. Leashack. And as far as merit pay, merit pay's there, we set the goals with the superintendent, she has accomplished them, and they have to be sent to the county, get approved, so it's not just fishing it out. And as far as the salary, it hasn't changed, the 2% increase has been in the salary, right? I know if you look at the, I guess, the contract language that there has a salary of 200,000, that's a 2% increase in July. And, you know, so I fully support it, and I do understand that people in this business, who aren't in this business, don't see it, but I do.
Any other board member comments? Mr. Marinella?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on the fact that the person who leads a school district pulls all the strings on how the district operates. They set the tone, they are the voice of the district, they clarify for the public what is happening within the schools, because this is a very complicated organization, it is a very, very significant part of our community, it impacts every aspect of everyone's life in this community, for the better or for the worse. And someone who works in a school has done so for a long time. The superintendent makes it possible for all of the other people in the district to do their job and do it well. I have two children who came through South Atlantic High School already, who ripped the roof off this high school, and are top colleges in America right now, and are going places, because they had quality teachers who could do their jobs in the classroom, and that happens only because the leader can set the tone and also give the individuals in the district, the principals and every other person, the ability to do their jobs. Their comments about, does the superintendent do everything herself? That's impossible. The superintendent has to make sure that everyone else has what they need to support the needs of the kids in the district, which is why we all are here. So I fully support the work the superintendent has done. There is no way to please everybody in an organization this large or in our community, because we can't, we don't have the resources to do such a thing. But we have a very high-quality school system for kids and families who are here, they can really get the most for their family and for their kids to get a good start in life. I support Dr. Leashack being here, she's doing a good job, and we need to get behind her and help her so that we can continue to grow in our schools. Thank you.
Any other board member comments? So I would like to just add that this board is extremely focused and fiscally responsible. There is no longer a salary cap for superintendents, and the Jersey cap got lifted. This was a very smart move for the board to do at this period of time, to get a high-quality superintendent locked in at, for a five-year contract with what I consider nominal pay increases on an annual basis, both less than the cost of living. I think that it really made a lot of sense for us to take this great talent that we have here with us right now and do this. Again, I urge everybody to support this one. Comments from the public on any of tonight's proposed resolutions?
You guys know how I lose my train of thought sometimes, so I won't be down today. I wanted to just say that I was happy to see on the agenda tonight that the SPEA contract is also going to be resolved, because we cannot do anything without our teachers and as an NJEA member as well. I, I, I hope, I know that Ms. Joffe has done probably a phenomenal job ensuring that they have a solid contract and that our teachers are happy. They have to be happy first. So, I support both items on this agenda, and I hope that the board pushes both through, and thank you to our teachers in South Plainfield, every day, every day.
Any other public comments on any of the proposed resolutions? Moving along. Resolution approved prior board meeting minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Marinella?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Cunici?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. As we continue to highlight the wonderful students and teachers of our district, this evening we'll have the pleasure of Ms. Anton and one of her students from the 3D animation film class. The students will demonstrate using suits, flawless movements that can then be applied to 3D characters that the students create in the software. Mr. Deal, would you turn to the podium?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Anton, our technology teacher, along with our senior, Kelly Gorman. Kelly will be going for veterinary technology next year, and I think this is going to be a pretty good start for her, and I think you all are going to appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who here has seen such films such as Frozen or Finding the Girl? So, the motion capture suit that Kelly is wearing will be able to recreate motion within the suit, the animation part. So, this suit is called the Ropoco Suit, which captures motion, so whatever movement she makes, the character behind her records. So, Kelly, move your right arm. Kelly, move your left arm. Kelly, move your right leg. Kelly, move your left leg. So, we can take her recording and we could apply it to any character that the students create in my class. So, one of the characters that the student created in my class was this robot that was currently, and we applied the motion that they created within the suit to this 3D character. This is the same technology that Pixar uses to create animations for some of their movies, such as Finding the Girl. With this suit, the students have the capability to have more interest in this career. When the students are able to learn Maya and create characters, this suit is easier for them to animate the exact motion they are looking for. Once the students are able to understand the basics to the program and how the suit reads their joints, they are able to take the science of it and apply it to the art side of the program. By having this opportunity to use these animation programs at South Plainfield High School, gives them the ability of using this technology before college, and impacts their choice of future career plans in this type of field. Through this unique experience offered to them at this point in their life, our students will be able to create films such as the following. Any questions?
I know it was done, though.
How much is one of those suits worth? No, sir, it's yours.
About $2,000.
About $2,000?
This is our new intro to animation class.
So, all right.
Just the wonder of it, yeah.
Does it really eye-hold?
Well, there are certain ones for movement, as you saw, like in the Hulk, so they have that type of face capture suit. So they come in different sizes, of course.
That's real cool.
Kelly, how do you like the class? Oh, it's so much fun. I had Ms. Anton for graphics one, and just coming back into her classroom, she has such a welcoming environment, and there are programs that we've used in the past, so it was easy to just jump back into it and get a feel for the new programs again, especially with this. It's really fun. That's fun to see, your name up on a screen. It's your body moving that character, so honestly, it's been a pretty good classroom.
That's great. Is it a full-year class?
Yes, it's a full-year class.
Does it, do you actually like at the end of the year to have a full animation or anything of that nature, or a whole one?
Well, since it's the first year, of course, it's actually the first, it's a brand-new course this year, so they will have a portfolio by the end of the year of all the things that they create. So they do create a lot of 3D animation in my class, we do claymation, 2D animation as well. They'll be doing a full figure face of themselves, so then they'll be able to break that as well.
That's great, very cool.
Now, I have one more. As required by the New Jersey Department of Education, I must provide to you the student safety data system report for period 1, which is July 1st until December 31st of this year. South Plainfield High School had 11 incidents reported that resulted in 50 removals, either in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension. There were two alleged HIB incidents reported, there have been eight trainings and four HIB programs. South Plainfield Middle School had eight incidents reported, no removals, four alleged HIB incidents, one HIB training, and one HIB program. Brand School had one incident reported, no removals, three alleged HIBs, two HIB trainings, and seven programs. Franklin had no incident reported, and they had four HIB trainings and five programs. Kennedy had no incidents reported with one HIB training and 10 HIB programs. Riley had zero incident reported with one HIB training and 10 HIB programs, and Roosevelt had one incident reported with 15 trainings and four programs. Now, they may have all been the same type of trainings, but just held on multiple occasions because of the size of the staff. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Leashack. Moving along to curriculum and student activities. Motion?
Motion.
Second? That is second. Any discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Marinella?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Cunici?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Moving along to personnel. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Are you doing the contract, sir?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to talk in the grand way, also, the teachers with the contract, being part of the community, it was, it was a good job. We, we got it done. No, we were not hit past, no, but really, you know, it went really, it went really well, and I'm happy, you know, for everyone, and like Sherri said, you know, instead of going wampo without all of you, doesn't matter. So I'm just happy it went well and worked. So I'm just happy it went well and worked.
Mr. Knowles?
Yes, just to address the teacher contract as well as part of the committee and it went very, very smoothly. I've been on a lot of these committees and we got it done quickly. It's a really good contract. I think it really shows how much we appreciate the staff. And thank you to the NJEA, South Plainfield SPA for, you know, working so well with us. We really appreciate it.
Yes, true. Mr. Farinella?
And I'm going to echo those comments. The SPA and we're working very closely and efficiently and effectively and we have a fair contract, we have stability and we can move forward and teachers can come to work and not have to have peace of mind. And I think that's very important. So congratulations on settling this contract very quickly and it's a great contract for all.
Any other? Can I get a roll call please? Mr. Booth?
Yes, abstaining on 12E and 12F as I am conflicted.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes, on 12E. I just want to commend Diana Joffe, Sandy Doian, Paul Spelork and the rest of your leadership and the staff that stand behind you. And on F, on both, no vote, present no vote.
Mr. Farinella?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Finesi?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolak? Mr. Casio?
Yes, I have to abstain on 12G number 15, 12E and 12F.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving along to finance. Can I get a motion?
No vote.
Back in. Any discussion?
Discussion.
This is what? Yep.
On page 12, under, I'm a little bit, page 12. For the ESS Northeast, that's the name for Source for Teachers. There's a lot of positions that can't be filled, that haven't been filled in the past, but I believe that's an issue all over the state. And I believe that there is no other option unless we have our own substitutes.
Any other discussion? Mr. Finesi?
Yeah, one thing that caught my eye on this last week were the 18 grants that we're accepting. So I just want to give a shout out or a thank you to everyone who wrote a grant. I know the time it takes to write these grants and I know the time, sometimes you feel like it's not worth it because you can spend hours and hours and hours and it looks great and you're going for $1,000 or $2,000 and you don't get it. So I commend all of them and, you know, I just wanted to mention them personally because we need to get a list of who the grant, where submitted grants. There's a new garrison, Christine Brandenburg, Shannon Madeline and Barbara Pennelli. If I missed anybody, there's also one that says multiple teachers, so multiple teachers. But I know that it involves a lot of people for these things and they just caught my eye that we had 18 grants. And it's just, you know, the time when we're looking for things, this is really nice to see.
Mrs. Boyle again?
I was going to save mine for a board member comments, but since we're on the section of the agenda, again, a new garrison who did a tremendous amount of grant writing. Awesome for all the amount of grants that we received. Also to Shannon Madeline, Christine Brandenburg, Michelle Holler, Barbara Pennelli and the multiple teachers who worked on the one grant. Great job for artists and our students.
Any other discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Farinella?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Finesi?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes, but abstain on number eight.
Mrs. Wolak?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Moving along, any public comments on any items?
Diana Joffe, South Plainfield Education Association. I waited till after the post. I want to thank the board and the SPA for working so well, getting this job done. As everybody said on the board here, it went, it was pretty painless sort of change. So we truly appreciate that and I will echo what Mr. Farinella said. Now we can get to the job of the business of doing education and working together hand in hand with the respect that we have for teachers, staff, administrators. I really, we do appreciate it. Just want to make another comment. For the past, I don't know how many, 15 making war years, gentlemen sitting in the audience has come up here and insulted our Board of Education, our teachers, our administrators. I have asked this gentleman to, for the past, I don't know how many years, to come into the building, take a tour. Come and see what this school district is all about. He's ready to demoralize us, but he's never come in to see what we really do. So, you know, I'm tired of the rhetoric. I'm tired of his comparisons to NASA and anywhere else. NASA doesn't take care of children, we do. And that's the single most important job, other than medicine, that we can do for this society. So I'm sorry, but I have to disagree with you wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Stacy Greening, 1252 South 11th Street, South Plainfield. I just wanted to go into your attention. So, as a concerned parent and a foundational educator with a background in special education who works for another large school district in the state of New Jersey, I am concerned about the special education supports that have been taken place in the South Plainfield Middle School. I have twin boys. One of those children has an IEP. He has been in a classroom thus far without a resource teacher since October, the beginning of November. As an educator and as a supervisor of a federal program in my district, I do understand that things take time. So, I'm the parent, it's going to be okay, someone will be here. However, that didn't happen for my son and for the rest of the children that are in that classroom. So my concerns are, when there is not a resource teacher present to provide the needed accommodations and modifications on behalf of that child, that is an issue that we need to get right right away. When I speak to the teacher and to the child study team to recommend that we change his programming due to the fact that we can't get it right is not what we do to a child and to a family who is invested in this district. So, I just want to be clear that children should get the support that they need and deserve based on their IEP with an individualized education plan and changes should not be made to their IEP based on what services we can provide at the time. So I do understand personnel issues happen, but my issue as a parent and as an active parent in the world of education is that we need to get it right on behalf of children, families in our community for children because they are the ones that are impacted. So as a parent, I look at it and as an educator, I look at it with a two-fold tact. That for this child, he was really done a disservice because there was not a person in place. I spoke to the general education teacher who said that she was frustrated and I'm an educator's educator, right? So I educate educators and they need to have what they need in order to feel supported. I talked about maybe we can do a consultative model, but to be perfectly honest with you, the last time we talked on his IEP about doing a consultative model, the person who consulted, her first stop was the gym teacher. It's not acceptable. It's not acceptable. That's not what we do for a child who needs multiple layers of support and then to say, well, we can offer him pull-out resource because that's what we can get right now. I'm not changing his programming because that's not what he needs. We need to put in place the support that he needs and make sure we support our teachers in the classroom because from what I heard, she's overwhelmed. And I understand that having a special education background that she does not have, right? So, I just need to be sure that it's put in place and I did send an email to multiple people about two weeks ago and I haven't heard a response. So as a parent, that's also, and as an educator, that's also a little disheartening. So I just need to be sure and I heard someone mention Source for Teachers, that you utilize that. But unfortunately, for the second marking cycle, what I was looking forward to for my son did not happen and it didn't happen for the children who also sat inside that classroom. They had multiple substitutes in addition to people who were on duty periods, who were pulled into that classroom, who did not know how to support those children. So when I look at it from an educator hat, they were done a disservice. And I just want to ensure that going forward for the next marking cycle for my child and the children who are in that classroom, that there is a teacher with a special education background who's in that classroom to support those students.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Sir?
Amongst the 350 teachers and guidance counselor, director of guidance counselor in elementary schools, what are doing in a room they are guiding? They're guiding for what? What is the role of a guidance counselor in the elementary school?
Serious?
Sir, all of our students are entitled to supports that they need. Whether they're support through social emotional learning, they have counseling issues, children deal with anxiety, there's a number of issues that students deal with. Guidance counselors are there to help them, to give them the tools that they need, help them work through their problems. If you think that this only happens once you move on to middle school, you are mistaken. We want to provide these students with the tools that they need in order to make it through life and it begins in the elementary schools. It begins, we have guidance counselors that work with our preschoolers. So, you are correct, we do have guidance counselors in our elementary schools. We don't have enough guidance counselors in our elementary schools to help deal with all of the issues that occur in the elementary.
So, what do you say, the technique, that they are not guidance counselor but counselor of emotional or whatever you can come up with?
That's the role of a school guidance counselor in the elementary level is to support the students' emotional, social learning.
There is a discussion close for today's for teachers convention. Does Bob have any idea how many teachers of our school were at the convention? Okay, they don't. So, why is this fiction that the convention are extremely useful for teachers is being tolerated? As I read in the newspaper, you can find in the newspaper that approximately 70% of the teachers attend conventions. So apparently about 70% of teachers, not very useful too, but school is still closed. So what?
Sir, that, you'll have to take that up with the state of New Jersey. That's a law that we have to follow during that time. So, take that to the state house.
Okay, I would, okay, I would also answer Mrs. Joffe, no, Madame Joffe, about this absolutely tired argument, come to our school and see what wonderful work we are doing. I don't have to go to school. I see a product of your school and that's enough for me to, to hold my opinion about. Also, if you, Mrs. Joffe, if you-
Sir, just please direct your comments to the board, not to a member of the audience. Your-
I have to answer this.
I understand.
Okay. And my question to Mrs. Joffe is the following. If she is buying a car, does she go to the factory to check how hard the workers are working over there? Or she just goes to the consumer report or something like that and reads if the car is good or no good? And that's my answer to why I am not visiting to this wonderful schools of South Plainfield.
I'm sorry, if you don't mind, I just want to say, if Ms. Joffe was buying a car, cars are the same. Are you assuming that all students come in, all children come in and they're the same? They are not. Our teachers, our teachers work hard every minute of the day. They work hard after school. They're here before school to help our students to work with them, to support them. You're comparing a human being to a piece of machinery. Because I can tell you, if a company ordered widgets and they were defective, you wouldn't order from that company again. We receive whatever students are in our district and we receive them with open arms and these teachers work hard every day to get them to improve, to learn, to understand. That's very different than a car.
I agree on that, but I don't understand what it has to do with me.
If you don't understand, maybe you should go into the school and see what goes on. Because you're standing on the outside, giving your opinion on something you clearly know nothing about.
Or join the damn board, I'm tired of this. Come up here. Alright, thank you. Any other public comments?
I just wanted to ask about the long signs. What's the criteria for the long signs?
I've mentioned this before, I believe Mrs. Boyle had asked this. I go into the schools, I'm in the schools all the time. Every day I'm in the schools, I'm in and out of classrooms. If I have the opportunity to walk into a classroom, they don't know that I'm coming and I happen to see a student who's making a presentation, somebody who's doing something extra in the classroom, I'm proud of them. I'm proud that they're standing up there. Some of them are our special education students, some are students who had worked very hard on a project or whatever they're doing. And it's just the opportunity to let them know, I'm proud of you. And now when I go into the hallways and the kids see me, they're walking past me saying, are you coming to my classroom? Are you coming in today? Are you coming in to see me? So it's the opportunity to let them know I'm proud of them.
They cost the board $100 to sign so far.
And worth every penny.
And yours.
In the opinion of the students and the parents who receive the phone call. And I intend to keep doing it until the end of the school year and hopefully next year as well.
Well, I don't know how many parents you've talked to, but I can tell that the parents I talked to, not everybody feels the same. But I do have a question on the fact that if you are only going in a classroom, random classroom, for 10 minutes, that you're not in 10 months out of the year. How do you know the potential of every student in that class to think of what's great at that point in time? Maybe a child that doesn't have the same potential as somebody else did something great that day, you're not seeing that in the full potential of that child.
You're absolutely right. It's just the same as anybody else. If they had a movement going on for years and years and years, thought you're doing something good, you don't catch everything. You catch what you catch. So the opportunity is for me to go in and see whatever's happening in the classroom. Hopefully I can see as many students as I can. I get into as many classrooms as I can, I get into all the buildings. I'm one person, so I can only do so many things. There are other things that are going on in the schools. They're caught doing things that are great and they're acknowledged in different ways. This is my opportunity to acknowledge the students.
But why not ask a teacher that knows those children a little bit better?
Because I'm not, because I'm going in and seeing what's happening. I don't want to, I don't want to burden the teacher and say to them, tell me what else is happening. It's, I randomly go into a classroom. Sometimes I see students that are working all, they're all working together and I don't have the opportunity to see anybody doing one thing that's different. But when I open up the door, I'm going to use you, Ms. Joffe. I opened up Ms. Joffe's classroom.
My daughter was in that classroom.
Okay, there were students giving presentations. I had the opportunity- There were students giving presentations, I had the opportunity to stay for a couple of them, if I could have stayed for more, that would have been great.
But then you're not giving all the children the same opportunity, is my point.
There are thirty-four hundred students in here, I can't see thirty-four hundred students or something.
So not everybody has the opportunity.
Everybody has the opportunity, and hopefully at some point, I'll, I'll get to go in and see as many as I can. That's what lady said.
The other question I have too is the $4,000 that we're spending to look for a new principal for the high school. Why can't you do those interviews? Why does it have to be an outside agency in Sparta that knows nothing about South Plainfield and our needs here?
Well, the outside agency is from Sparta, it doesn't make a difference. The, the plan for the district is, and as you know, we talked about this last year, the, the principal, we took it out of the position, the former principal, and it was late in the school year. We discussed with the public, and the board was aware, we all had the same plan, that we were going to put an interim in place, and then during the course of this school year, we would host for a principal. We did receive, I did receive, a number of calls from people in the community that said to me, why did you do it that way? There wasn't the opportunity for the, for the community to give their feedback. So we talked about it as a board, and the board decided that we would hire a search firm, the search firm would meet with the community, that's planned for the first week of March, take all the feedback from the, from the community on what they're looking for.
Is that gonna happen?
It'll happen here, it'll happen here in the media center. That's their opportunity to give feedback, what is it that you're looking for in terms of a, of a principal? What are you looking for, what type of characteristics? What are your top priorities here in the high school? They will also meet with all of the faculty and staff of the high school, they'll have the opportunity to give their feedback, they're stakeholders. And once that's done, then all that information will come out to the board, it's the opportunity to take as many top quality candidates and, and have the opportunity to offer the best for South Plainfield.
Why not keep the interim that you have now that's doing a great job?
I'm not going to talk about the interim, yes, Mr. Deal is doing a great job.
Well, is he gonna be a contender, I hope?
That's not for me to say.
He'd be a boss.
State affiliate in South Plainfield Education Association, I wasn't gonna say anything, but since the door is open, I would like to ask the board to please, if you could look into the possibility of having full-time counselors in every elementary school, because we are struggling to get these kids the services that they need. Covering INRS meetings, when you have a child in another school, and then, yes, there are six-year-old children that are suicidal, whether you understand it or not, we have a lot of problems that are not being met and dealt with, because we don't have the personnel. So, you know, since we were talking about it, I think it's really important that we look into the possibility of full-time counselors in every elementary school. Thank you.
I'm glad you brought that up, just so you know, it's on our very narrow rate offer for the budget for next year.
Thank you, because it really is, you know, they're not getting, they're just not getting the services that they need, and it's really, but thank you very much.
Any other public comments? Board member comments? Mr. Hasselberg?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to commend the negotiation teams from the board and the SPEA for coming to an amiable resolution on the contract, so their focus can be on the students and the rest of the school year, as well as getting the superintendent's contract settled and moving forward. So, that's off the table, and we can just move forward with the service of the district. I also did a quick tally of these grants that we got tonight, it comes to over $125,000, which is supplemental to provide programs, resources, and staffing for things that we can't put in our budget due to other needs. So, commendations to everybody who was involved in the grants, and I'd like to see more of them, and it's good that South Plainfield's finally getting some of the outside funding that they're requesting. And on a final note, the South Plainfield High School boosts the musical arts and having a pasta dinner at the Elks this Saturday night, five to eight, and that's to support musical activities in the high school. So, everybody's invited, it's good food, and the kids will be there helping out, and there's dessert too. Other than that.
Please, Miller.
I would just like to congratulate the teacher and the student on that animation presentation, that DVD animation, that was like incredible job, amazing job, it was so interesting, I really didn't know that that is how everything worked. And, you know, you know, like Dr. Leachak said, our schools are now doing such incredible things with our students. If you look back fifteen years ago, our students didn't have these kind of opportunities and have these kind of classes. We are moving ahead, we've got a lot of STEM programs in place, and I'll tell you, I would love to go back to high school now, because all the places that are being offered, it is really, really incredible, and our students are very, very lucky, and they're very lucky to have the education like we have and teachers that we have and programs. So, again, wonderful program by the, the high school student there, Kelly. Also, I just wanted to wish Joanne Plaine, I forgot to wish her a happy, healthy retirement, I hope she enjoys every minute of it, and just want to thank her for everything she's done for the district and students over the years. And also with the grant writing, you know, congratulations to everybody who worked on these grants, grant writing is not easy, it's a lot of paperwork to fill out, a lot of cert qualifications that have to be met, and one of these, two of these grants were for $10,000, another one was for $30,000, so these aren't little peanut grants that we're getting. So, to everybody who worked in these grants, congratulations and great job.
Mr. Cassiel? First, I want to apologize for my own person, I just, I can't take that guy, I'm tired of insulting the teachers, I'm tired of insulting the children, tired of insulting us, it's just enough. I don't know what his deal is, he's an angry old man, and, I'm sorry. Secondly, I want to thank Joanne Crystal Malusi for the signs are doing, from Mr. Deal and Dr. Leachak, we collaborated to get the artwork done, and hopefully that's up in the next few weeks, it's gonna look great outside of Media Center. Teachers, congratulations, I couldn't vote, I'm very happy for you. Dr. Leachak?
Thank you.
There's been some questions raised about the Riley School playground. For those that do not know, the PTO raised a certain amount of money, as I understand it, there's a playground that was being ordered?
Chosen.
And Dr. Leachak, I worked closely with them to get this project done, so it will be a playground, hopefully, in the near future.
It's ordered now, hopefully it'll be in before the spring. I mean, shifting, it won't be installed, but it'll be shifting.
And lastly, the paving at Joseph Field, it's on here online, page nineteen, the shared service committee worked hard with the borough to get this project done, we tried to collaborate and save money with the pool project that they're doing, we saved an estimated $40,000 bundling that project with the pool parking lot project, we saved on survey fees, engineering fees, the town waiting for us, and pooling that, this project with them, in excess of $40,000, people don't see that, what goes on behind the scenes, but it's a lot of money, so just wanted you to know that. And that's it. Mr. Wood?
Yes, I'd like to say great job to Mr. Deal, Mrs. Anton, and her student tonight on the presentation, it was excellent, something that we don't get to see. Also, I was able to attend the STEAM STEM program at Kennedy School, watched all the students from grades K through four do their STEAM and STEM projects, even the little ones, they were all amazing, the egg drop went really well. So I was glad to see that, very impressed with that project. Also, I'd like to commend our high school student, Emma Warren, for hosting the recreation basketball traveling team and the wrestling teams to be present at the high school men's basketball game. They stood up with the varsity players during the, in National Anthem, and she put this all together by herself, along with the help of Mr. Deal and Kevin McCann, so thank you again for that. Also, the paving of Joseph Field, I'm glad to see that's finally gonna happen, I know that the borough has an easement through there, there's a pipe, in 2008, we watched a camera both in that pipe, because it kept cracking and causing flooding back in that area, so that did get resolved, so I'm glad to see that the paving is gonna take place, because when the cars are parked on the grass and they come up over the lip of that paved area, they hit the bottom of their car. So, that'll be a great thing. And, again, for all the grant writing, great job to everybody. And just a reminder that every member of the board has the right to receive all documentations and information on all board business. I heard some things tonight that some of us knew nothing about, so please make sure you share all the information with us. Thank you.
What did you hear tonight, did you get involved in the situation?
Talked about the counselors being in the budget for next year, I didn't hear that discussion, and also...
Wasn't part of the board discussion yet, you don't have the way the budget goes.
You talked about sending a narrow site for next year for the counselors.
Correct.
Well, we weren't given that information.
Okay.
Also, Riley School Playground, that's, that playground has been torn down and put back up for the past number of years. Being on the PTO there, we raised money, but the equipment always has to come down, because it doesn't meet the standards, and, and didn't hear about that, so, thank you.
Any other board member comments? Okay, I'd like to take a couple of minutes this evening and talk about a few things. First thing I want to talk about is I'd like the board to review the, how we're handling threats to the schools on social media, what our discipline is for the students who post threats about our schools, what is the discipline for children who repost that post? And I want, I'd really like for the board and the district, the administration, consider sending home a letter to the parents in multiple languages, and I'm not talking about an email, I'm talking about an actual letter that comes in the mail, about how serious this issue is, and how we are not going to tolerate it. The discipline has got to be swift, and it's got to be severe. The message has to be given. We cannot subject our children in this community and in our schools to go into school, be nervous on a day, because somebody decided on Snapchat to put up some sort of post. So I would love for us to review that and make sure that the discipline that we're gonna, and the policy and the discipline that we're gonna hand down is... I really bothered this week when that happened. Let's move on to better things, okay? On the grants, grants are great, happy to see them, you know, finally, you know, coming through here, we're really excited about that. The ones that have already been granted to us, fantastic, there's a bunch that are applied for, let's keep our fingers crossed that, you know, that we get them, we can always, we can always use the money, appreciate everybody's time and effort that they put into, into doing those, you know, let's keep the momentum going there on grant writing, we need to have your money. Regarding the, the search for the principals in the district, we fully understand, we know Mr. Deal's doing a good job, this is not against Mr. Deal. Last year, when we brought all the interims in, we told everybody that we would be doing a complete search next year, just as some people are coming in now and saying, and they're upset, because they're taking it the way that we don't want to take it. If we didn't do this, we'd have a whole nother crew of people in here saying, you said last year you were gonna do a complete search, and you didn't do it. So, we are very focused on doing the best we can to keep in our word in what we say that we're going to do. That's why this is going on. I want to, I want to thank our negotiation team, who worked very nicely together, and I'm very happy that they considered and allowed a different approach to negotiations this year than we had taken in the past. It seemed to work out very nicely, so I'm very thankful for that, and very proud of, you know, the work that we all put in and the approach that we, that we took. Very pleased with the SPEA on the way that it went, there was no fighting, there was no arguing, there was two meetings, we were done. We wanted it done before Christmas, it got done a little after, that's okay, we're okay with that. So, great job by everybody all the way around. And as far as I'm concerned, tonight's a great night for the district of South Plainfield. Between the teachers' contracts, between Dr. Leachak's contract, we're looking pretty good going into the future here, we've got great teachers, we've got great administrators, and it's really a good time to, to be part of the South Plainfield Board of Education. Proud to be up here with everybody else who's on this, on this board that works hard on everything that we accomplish, we're really proud of the teachers, we're thankful for everything, and the administrators, everybody who works in this district for all the efforts and everything that, that is put out there. So, with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?